Works a lot of dense, not that's great, but like.
I don't mean to just drink.
Put down my boys concrete floor.
Cheers.
Oh, you want labs?
Yeah.
Actually helps, but I've only drank forty percent today.
Hang on.
Hey, how you doing?
Good. We ready to go? Everybody? Can we have a roll call, please?
John Coleman.
Here.
Kim Krepper.
Here.
April Fadell.
Here.
Ronnie Mains.
Here.
Jason Payne.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Okay, we have a call. I'd like to call the June 2nd, 2025 Regula City Council Meeting to Order. And welcome everybody in attendance. If you have not done so, please sign in so we can have a record to be in here. And then can we stand and Jason Payne, can you lead us in a prayer? And I'd also like to congratulate Jason for his chaplain certification that he did. And then we'll do a budget.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and pray. Lord, thank you so much for the beautiful day today. Thank you so much for the city. Thank you so much for what you're doing here. And just, just all the amazing things that are happening, Lord. We just pray that you continue to bless this team here, Lord, the leadership of the city and all help us all to just to do our best, Lord, to, to help the city and the citizens here, Lord, and it be a blessing to this town, Lord. And just continue to be with us tonight and all the things we're going to discuss and give us your wisdom. And just allow us to have a good evening tonight and this discussion and all the decisions we make. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We receive. Okay, get into some announcements. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Good. And for those who are watching at home, you should be seeing me very clearly. We had new video, new audio put in. That was like the biggest complaint, the first couple of weeks meetings that I received when I was started. So we put in some new equipment and so it should be nice shiny HD. Couple announcements. On Saturday, the fourteenth of June is William Arnold Founders Day. And that will be a celebration that starts at noon to four, but if you come at 10:00 AM, you will see the cannon get shot. And I get the privilege of being the one to shoot the cannon. So please plan on attending. Again, on Monday, on Splash Park, starting June ninth through August first, from 12:30 to 12:45, you can get a free lunch for the kids. And eighteen years old and younger, so please take advantage of that. Sounds like fun. Chief Anderson would like to tell everybody that he's hiring at the fire department. I think you're down about three or four?
We're down five.
Five. Okay, so now anybody knows, anybody who's interested in that, please, come. That being said, I want to talk about the budget and budget process. In front of you is a proposed budget that the team has been working on for quite a while. There's a separate document that has the requested capital for the departments. There's also a sheet of summary sheet of what is anticipated to be carried over to the next fiscal year. And we do have a budget workshop scheduled for Thursday. So I would, and I'm not looking to go through it today, but by Thursday, I'm sure you'll have a lot of questions and input that we appreciate. I'd also like to read a memo that I wrote regarding the budget and how we got to where we were. And this is to the Williamstown City Council and also to the residents. The process of starting a budget should begin in February. This year, unfortunately, the process was not started until I became mayor in early May. This meant we had to combine, we had to combine four months of work and preparation into one. Also, in a lot of circumstances, our revenues have not been coded to the correct department and the same as the expenses. I think I've gone over this before. So what revenue we had coming in to the city hall was all put in one bucket. And it was not credited to the proper budgets departments that it should have. And in a lot of cases, the expenses were basically the same. We, as far as salaries and benefits, we are still working on some of that in each, in each area. We found out last week that, I think at the time, we had twenty-six separate checking accounts or bank accounts, if you will, with, with different meaning for each one. None of them had been reconciled since last June. So imagine if you had a checkbook and you would just put money in and taking money out, but not writing anything down or balancing your checkbook. That's basically the case. So we're, we're getting through that. As you all know, there's a forensic audit going on and I'm hoping to get a update on that in the very near future. So hopefully I can get back to and report out at least the progress so far. I'm hoping to do that at the second meeting in June. If not, definitely by the first meeting in July. There's also been some financial obligations that the city is obliged or should have paid debts that we should have made that we did not. And some of these I'm just finding out as of latest last week. And some of them were significant amounts. So with all that being said, if you look at your budgets, I'm asking that you go by twenty-three, twenty-four as your baseline. And twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five, some of those are still blank, those areas. Twenty-three, twenty-four budget year and the preceding four years in front of that. Those are all audited numbers. So if you're looking for trends, I would go by that, those trends nineteen through twenty-three. And then look at the twenty-five, twenty-six number and then come to your own conclusions. But that's the only way I could really make sense of putting this budget together. And I think you'll see that it does make sense doing it that way. Again, I'm sure you'll have questions, but we will be glad to answer them. And like I said, the capital requests are in a separate sheet. The focus of this budget that I prepared and the vision it represents is three things. Upgrading our infrastructure, improving our community services and safety and fiscal accountability. With regards to infrastructure, we have equipment and buildings throughout the town that are deteriorating and are obsolete and need anywhere from fresh painting to replacement. Some of our capital maintenance schedules have either not been completed or have been put off due to different reasons. However, they are now starting to take a toll on city services. I mean, some of these reasons of COVID, you know, when COVID hit, obviously we stopped doing a lot of things just to get through that. I understand that. But now it's, it's time that we started the infrastructure, the video and audio equipment that we just put into this chamber, council chamber, haven't been changed or improved since two thousand and three, when the building was, was purchased, was built. So, you know, it was all, a lot of it was analog. We now have a good system, but those are the things that I could go throughout the town and tell you about. It's not going to get done overnight. It's not going to get done in a year, but it's going to take time. But I believe it's time we start and we start having a plan and start saving, if you will, for the future. Community services and safety. We have talked a lot about Webb Park this past year and it has great potential. And a lot of our families use it for get togethers as well as a place to take their kids for exercise. This along with Splash Park and other areas in our city, like the amphitheater, not only need repairs and improvements, but it's also, they've been vandalized recently. If you've gone down, you've seen graffiti written on shelter walls, on bathroom walls. You know, there's, there's literally been toilets destroyed. Tim Beach had to really do a lot of work at Splash Park to get that up and running for this year. So in this budget, we prioritize the equipment and improvements needed as well as an improved security system. And that security system would not only be throughout the city, it would be in this building as well. And that's something that would take a couple of years to get to where we want to be. But again, we're going to put a down payment on it this year. And fiscal accountability, our primary obligation is to the city's taxpayers who will hold us responsible for our decisions. This budget will meet our current needs while planning for future investments. To address these pressing issues, the city will implement a plan ensuring that the necessary repairs and upgrades are completed with urgency. An assessment of city assets will be conducted to prioritize the most critical needs such as replacing outdated equipment, unsafe vehicles, and securing funding for neglected facilities. This process is not merely about fixing our present issues, but about creating a sustainable model of upkeep that prevents future deterioration. Collaboration among departments will be a pivotal strategy. By leveraging the collective experience of city leaders and employees, we will identify new ideas to solve the challenges of the day. Updated technology and communication will allow us to address key issues with greater efficiency and transparency. We are prioritizing financial accountability by implementing processes and standard practices to ensure that correct and accepting accounting procedures are followed. This approach will help to eliminate the errors and delays that have affected the city over the past year. This budget underscores our dedication to the well-being and growth of Williamstown. These initiatives will ensure safety and prosperity while responsibly serving our residents. And I'll leave you with that to remember as you go through the budget. And I look forward to your thoughts and comments on Thursday in their absence. Any, any comments? Feedback? Okay, moving on. We are going to go with the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh six. A budget amendment. This, if you remember, was for the fuel lines. This will be our second reading. And just to remind everybody, we took, I believe it was seventy-six thousand dollars from the occupational payroll tax line item and added that in order to repair the fuel lines down at the Marina. Luke, would you want to read the ordinance?
Yes, sir. This ordinance follows the fire department's request or notice of hiring firefighters. It's ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero six. In ordinance of the city of Williamstown in Grant County, Kentucky, amending its line item budget for the city of Williamstown pursuant to KRS ninety-one A point zero three zero subsection ten for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-four and ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-five, and providing that no monies shall be expended by or on behalf of the city of Williamstown except in accordance therewith. Be ordered, be ordained by the city of Williamstown in Grant County, Kentucky as follows. Section one, pursuant to the requirement of KRS ninety-one A zero point zero three zero subsection ten, the city of Williamstown shall during the fiscal year beginning on July one, two thousand and twenty-four and ending on June thirty, two thousand and twenty-five, operate and be operated pursuant to the line item budget attached hereto and made a part of thereof by reference with those additions being underlined and the deletions being designated by a broken line through the words or figures. And no monies shall be expended by or on behalf of the city of Williamstown. Section two, the provisions of this ordinance are severable and the invalidity of any provision of this ordinance shall not affect the validity of any other provision thereof. And such other provisions shall remain in full force and effect as long as they remain valid in the absence of those provisions determined to be invalid. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent such conflict. Section four, this ordinance shall be effective as soon as possible according to law. Section five, this ordinance shall be published in summary pursuant to KRS eighty-three eight point zero six zero subsection nine with a line for the mayor to sign and attest by the city clerk. And the first reading of this is on May twenty. Second will be, has been made here on June second. For everyone's clarification, the, the items that are changed here, when you turn the page, again, you come to the spreadsheet dealing with the revenue for general fund. You'll see a fourth line down, occupational payroll tax is reduced fifty-two thousand four hundred. And then on the next page in red, you'll see the Marina gas line has been increased to seventy-six thousand for a total revenue budget of four million four hundred and two thousand two hundred and thirty-one. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Luke. That being said, is there a motion?
Make a motion. Accept. The second reading, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero six.
Okay, motion made by Councilor Payne. There is second.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilor May. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call?
John Coleman.
Yes.
Kim Krepper.
Yes.
April Fadell.
Yes.
Ronnie Mains.
Yes.
Jason Payne.
Yes.
Jensen Smith.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you. And then as soon as that gets published, it will be law. Correction and approval of meeting minutes for special council meeting, April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Correction and approval of meeting minutes for special council meeting April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, and special council meeting minutes for May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. I presume everybody has had time to go through them this weekend? Since I personally delivered your packet?
Thank you for that.
And if so, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Councilor Fubella. A motion to accept both of them?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilor Coleman? Any discussion? Rokeau?
John Coleman?
Yes.
Kim Prepper?
Yes.
April Fubella?
Yes.
Ronnie Mains?
Yes.
Jason Payne?
Yes.
Jenna Smith?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, now comes to a fun time on the agenda. As you know, a former assistant clerk left us a while back, but she has decided she'd like to come back and help us through this period and hopefully longer. And I'd like to appoint Crystal Fryman as our new city clerk. And with that, I would like the motion and the second, hopefully, to approve her permanent.
I'll make that motion.
Made the motion by Ronnie Mains. Seconded by John Coleman? Any discussion on the motion? Rokeau?
John Coleman?
Yes.
Kim Prepper?
Yes.
April Fubella?
Yes.
Ronnie Mains?
Yes.
Jason Payne?
Yes.
Jenna Smith?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Welcome back, Crystal. We're happy to have you. And with that, I want to say thank you to Lisa Clifton, who has been filling in, just doing a tremendously good job. So appreciated. I mean, since I've been here, you've really helped me and you've showed me everything. So I so much appreciate that. And I know with you and Crystal, we're going to have a great team and we will be back on our feet in no time. Okay, so first reading adopting the supplement code of ordinances. Okay, so as you recall, a couple of weeks ago, you all received in your packets copies of the new ordinances that would have been, that needed to go into your ordinance book. What we didn't do is pass our own ordinance accepting them. So this will be the first reading on that. And Luke, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir. This is ordinance number twenty-two-five dash zero-seven. It follows the minutes that you just passed. This is an ordinance of the city of Williamstown, Kentucky, enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances. Whereas American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati, Ohio has completed the supplement to the code of ordinances of the city of Williamstown, which supplement contains all ordinances of a general nature enacted since the prior supplement to the code of ordinances of this municipality. And whereas American Legal Publishing Corporation has recommended the revision or addition of certain sections of the code of ordinances, which are based on or make references to sections of the Kentucky revised statutes. And whereas it is the intent of city council to accept these updated sections in accordance with the changes of the law of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. And now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Williamstown, Kentucky, section one, that the supplement to the code of ordinances of the city of Williamstown, Kentucky, as submitted by American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati, Ohio, be adopted by reference as if set out in its entirety. Section two, that this ordinance shall take effect and be in force from and after its date of passage, approval, and publication as required by law, the line for the mayor to sign and the clerk.
Okay, that's our first reading, and we will have the second reading at the next meeting. Thank you, Luke.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next, so the... I try not to read social media too much, but I know when people saw this, they, you know, had a lot of questions. So I will try to answer some of them. The Republic Waste Company that picks up our garbage, there's a ongoing contract. It's multiple years. And then every two years is what they call a renegotiation. It's still part of the original contract. And every two years it's up. This is the year it's up. They are increasing their fees by five dollars per household. It is not the city, it's the contract that we have. It's not us, it's the county. We all are part of the interlocal contract, if you will. And I will also tell you that that's still probably the lowest price that you're going to get with regards to any of the major waste hauls. So that being said, this will be the first reading. Along with that, since July first, we will fall under the county EMS slash emergency services, where the county, the emergency services board will be the ones collecting money for the ambulance, et cetera. We will no longer collect that money. That's sixteen dollars a month. So this is A, adding five dollars to the waste hauling pickup for residents and taking away the sixteen dollars per month regarding the ambulance fees. Now, it's effective July first, but please keep in mind you will still get a bill in July for the fee because they charge you in the rear. So when you get your bill in July, you'll still see a sixteen dollar fee. You don't have to call us. That's because it's paid in the rear. And then starting in August, then you can call us. It's still there. All right, Luke?
Yes, sir. This is city of Williamstown, Kentucky, ordinance number twenty-two-five dash zero-eight. It's an ordinance of the city of Williamstown, Kentucky, amending section ninety-four point one-eight subsection A of the Williamstown Code of Ordinances and ordinance number twenty-two-four dash zero-four as they relate to the monthly charge for garbage pickup and disposal service and levying a monthly ser... I'm sorry, levying a monthly charge for emergency medical services and/or ambulance services. Be ordained by the city of Williamstown and Grant County, Kentucky as follows. Section one, ordinance number twenty-two-four dash four zero-four and section ninety-four point one-eight subsection A of the Williamstown Code of Ordinances are hereby amended as follows, with the words and numbers being added indicated by a single solid line beneath them and the words and numbers being deleted indicated by a single broken line through them as required by KRS eighty-three A point zero-six-zero subsection three. A, the city levies a monthly charge for such garbage pickup and disposal service at a rate of, and the number sixteen dollars has been struck and the number twenty-one dollars has been inserted, per month to be levied against each separate dwelling unit and each separate business, professional, commercial, or industrial enterprise. The charge to be included and made a part of the utility bill of each user. However, if more than one residential unit or business, professional, commercial, or industrial unit is included in one monthly bill, the charge for such garbage pickup and disposal service shall be equal to the individual charge multiplied by the number of such units. And then this following section is to be removed from the proposed ordinance. And that former section reads B, the city levies a monthly charge for such emergency medical services, EMS, and/or ambulance services at a rate of sixteen dollars per month to be levied against each separate dwelling unit and each separate business, professional, commercial, or industrial enterprise with the charge to be included and made a part of the utility bill or each user. However, if more than one residential unit or business, professional, commercial, or industrial unit is included in one utility bill, the charge for such emergency medical services, EMS, and/or ambulance services shall be equal to the individual charge multiplied by the number of such units. So that is proposed to be struck. Section two remains the same, and that says the provisions of this ordinance are severable and the invalidity of any provisions of the ordinance shall not affect the validity of any other provision thereof. And such other provisions shall remain in full force and effect as long as they remain valid in the absence of those provisions determined to be invalid. Section three remains the same. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section four is the same. This ordinance shall be effective as soon as possible according to law. And section five stays the same and says this ordinance shall be published in full pursuant to KRS eighty-three A dot oh-six-oh subsection nine with a line for the mayor and clerk to sign.
Okay, that's the first reading. Any discussion, comments?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, we will move on to the Lake Association dive dredging proposal. Mark Mosher is here from the Lake Association. In your packets, I have given you the...
I dropped one off and updated one because I added a couple of things over the week. And I brought some Shaw and Tal. This is a geotextile field sandbag. It's a small sample that they gave. The company is up in Cincinnati that makes those. And probably a thirty by one-hundred bag would be about three thousand dollars. They sell it up and they have a connection to it, so you can pump right into that. And then it acts like a big filter. So get your hands on what one of them will look like when it's land on somebody's property. In the presentation, the first four pages are basically the same vantage point of my boat dock. They're in different times of the year. The first one is when everything's a pool and it looks like it's really inviting and it's really nice and you try to jump in and to put beef at the back end of it. And as you can see, going on through August, September, and then also October, you know, what happens when the lake goes down? So you can see there isn't much water there. The two boats on the boat lift, both of them have shallow drafts, so I am pretty good for July. And then by sometimes in August and, you know, Labor Day, it's open season. So we did talk about a lot of things looking into this. Three of us were, I guess, our little dredging committee, myself, Tom Hutchinson's in the audience, and Bruce Corr. Three of us picked around the idea of how do we get this done? And we thought about purchasing equipment, creating an LLC, and going around the lake and doing hiring local landscapers to operate the equipment and basically pump out the lake into these bags. Well, it's, you know, the price of the equipment, it's cost prohibitive. You know, it's a brand-new piece of equipment to do this. The smaller dredges are about three hundred thousand dollars brand-new. Used ones are probably about half that. So it was a lot of money to invest to start up a small company and go do this. The other thing is we had to train everybody to do it. So if your operators were reliable, you know, you'd have somebody to work on it. And then if they weren't, they weren't. We also hired, or hired, we brought in a dredging company from Ohio, Ohio Dredge, who has dredging equipment. But the cost of their equipment and everything was just, it scared off a lot of people who would like to get their coach dredged. Well, then we stumbled upon, probably in the past month, a company that does what's called dive dredging. So it's almost like vacuuming. They've got a four-inch pipe and they put an auger on the end of it. And then they start, the divers go into the water and start dredging the water. And they can go four and five feet deep without too much trouble. So dive dredging is, you know, there's not a lot of heavy equipment hitting the lake. There's not a big barge out there. There's a small boat with a generator and a pump on it. It's more cost-effective because you're not paying for a three hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment. These guys come in with minimal equipment and they do the pumping. And they keep it simple. So, you know, they'll stay on top of whatever job that they're doing. It's precise, you know, it's controlled by hand. It's the divers in the water. Sometimes they're maybe standing up in it and they may be operating it, you know, right from on top of the water. Other times they're under the water and they're manipulating it. So they can work around boat docks. So that's a big plus for me because if you see my pictures, there's a boat dock and there's a lot of poles that are driven down into the water. So those are what they're sitting on bedrock. But they can remove three foot of silt. Tight access, onsite judgment. It is more cost-effective because the other dredging company gave me a price, and I'll be transparent. They gave me a price of fifteen thousand three hundred dollars to do my little code. And these guys came in and I sent them the pictures and they came back and said ninety-two hundred. So that's about forty percent better. And on the larger jobs, because Bruce had his quota, his was sixty percent less. So it is much more cost-effective for the home one. Company Superior Marina Dredging. John Cote is the owner. He is a former oil well diver. So, and he's got a team of divers that come with him. They stay on site. They're going to be renting a hotel for Airbnb somewhere around here for the whole time they're here. And if they have enough work out of Williamstown Lake, they'll spend the summer. So they're available probably a week or two after the Fourth of July. And they would like to go to work. So John is a very nice man, very informative. He can, he will answer any questions that we have. You know, if I thought of something over the weekend, I can text him and then he'll call me back and we'll chat and talk about it. One of the things that they do is they monitor the water quality as they're working. Okay, because oxygen levels, pH levels, nitrate concentrations will be affected when you're pulling stuff out and you're pulling things through the water. They'll also make sure that they don't create any algae blooms or kill any fish. And that's one of the benefits, you know, when you've got a person down there in the water or a team of people down there in the water working on it versus a big heavy piece of equipment. You know what, they can work around things. So, and they can make things happen. You know, going back to last year when we started this, and I think I was here probably about July last year, we, you know, we've gotten a letter from the Army Corps of Engineers confirming that, you know, we don't really need a permit for this. Kentucky Division of Water says, hey, as long as it's a small enough job under a quarter acre, it's not going to be a problem. You don't need a permit. And then Fish and Wildlife, Tom has been in contact with Fish and Wildlife and they're all for it because of what you're going to be taking out of the lake. But as long as you don't do it in March through May, which is spawning season, that's all A. So I think we're pretty good in those areas. Just to give you, the next page is approximately, now, we're going to work up to the shoreline, but approximately that square is fifty foot by a hundred foot looking down at my boat dock. Currently at the far end, which is farther out of the lake and, you know, probably a good forty feet from my boat dock, so it's about four foot deep. Up to my boat dock, it's two foot deep. So, you know, the lake starts getting down... So, you know, the lake starts getting down over six, eight inches, then I start having trouble getting in and out of there. So that's what it looks like. The last time I was here, you asked for a plan of what are we going to do with the dirt? Well, the next page shows you what the plan is. I own four lots up across the road, far away from the lake. And we're going to pump it up that hill and pump it into one of these geotextile bags. And it's going to sit there and it's going to dry out. It's going to take probably forty-five to sixty days for it to dry out completely. And then when it's done, you're pretty much sitting on a two foot by fifty foot by thirty foot of topsoil. So I have plenty of use for topsoil, so it'll, it'll get used up. It'll go into a garden or something like that. The de-watering bags, like I said, it's like a big filter. You put the stuff in it, you'll put the muck in it, and the water will come out. And, and Bruce had one, and actually one of these pictures is off of a video. But you fill it full and then the bag, when it starts to sweat, okay? So the condensation comes to the outside and then if you hold the bag up, you can see the water running out. The water's pretty clear. There's no sediment or anything else getting through that bag. So it acts like a big filter. The picture on the right is, that's a thirty by a hundred bag. They'll pump it up, it'll fill up like, I think it'll be like a sausage, you're filling this thing up. And then when the water leaves, it'll shrink down to two feet. So they can fill it up to about six feet high. And then they stop until the bag's full, so they don't overfill the bag. The next page is a list of people who are interested, and right now there's about fifteen locations on the lake that are interested in having the dredging done. I don't know how many will sign up, I don't know how many are serious, but once word gets out that these guys are on the lake, there might be more when people see how cost effective it is. And last but not least, you know, we're asking the city and city council for permission to do it. You don't need to do anything else. Give us permission. What I don't want is to have a company come in, especially we're going to have heavy equipment in here, and then all of a sudden you get the, you know, the Facebook call or somebody's videotaping it and say, oh my God, what are they doing? Do you know about it? I want to make sure you know about it. We want to be on the up and up. We want to get it done, get it done right, get it done professionally. There's, you know, it's going to be performed by the owners. The owners will be responsible for payment. Okay? It doesn't cost the city anything. We're not asking for any money, we're just asking for a yes. It will increase the water volume in the lake. If I take mud out, you know, the water level is what the water level is. If I take it out of the bottom, it's going to increase the capacity. And also it lessens the habitat for invasive species like the milfoil. So when we suck up this muck off the bottom of the lake, it's going to take milfoil root and all and it's going to go. And it'll be in that bag and it will die in that bag and it won't be coming back into the lake. So everybody who does this is going to clean it up around their docks. We just had a maintenance treatment on milfoil. It was a week before our memorial day weekend. And happily, there was only like seven spots on the lake that they had to do a spot treatment. They've used a lot of chemicals. I think the bill was twenty-one hundred dollars. I think you just saw that recently, but the bill was twenty-one hundred dollars. And fifteen hundred of it was to bring the boat down here and two guys for the day. So it was only like six hundred dollars worth of, worth of profit. So we're asking for permission, not asking for anything else. And we want to get started and it'll probably start, you know, shortly after the fourth of July.
Question, comments, concerns?
I have one.
Yes?
I guess you're explaining as to all the interested customers that want to do this, and all these interested customers, do they have a level place to store their storage bags?
Each one of them are going to be responsible for, and, and we know that you're going to, I'm having mine level out, okay?
It would have to be on a level spot.
It's got to be on a level spot. So they've got to, they're responsible for the, where they put the bag.
As long as they understand that, so that the bag doesn't become a hot dog and roll back in the lake.
Correct. Yes. The, all I can say is, and I've talked to the, John, who owns the Superior dredging. He said, can't let it go back in the lake. So if they don't have it done right, he says he won't pump.
Right.
So he is going to be our, he's going to police it. And he's agreed to do that. He says that, he says, I'm not, he says, I'm in business. He says, I do this all over the United States. He says, I'm not going to start screwing up now. He said, I will make sure that, you know, it will not go back into the lake. So if they're not prepared, they're not going to get it done. And they have to, and I'm, I'm not signing up to be everybody's project manager. You know, they got to figure it out themselves. I figured mine out. I, I really wanted to put it down closer so it wouldn't have to pump so far, but it's just not feasible, so.
I thought you and Tom were the project managers.
What's that?
I thought you and Tom were the project managers.
Just Tom.
You know, when I signed up for this, my job was to get permission. After that, you guys are on your own, but for the rest of them, but...
Y'all got a lot to do this summer.
Yeah, but...
Hey, question. In regards, along the same lines with, with the sludge where you're pumping it, I think there needs to be some over, I mean, you said you're not going to police it, but we need to have a plan. Anybody that wants to do it needs to show a plan of like, hey, this is where I plan to put it. And also probably get, maybe get your neighbors' consent. I don't know if this stuff is going to smell, but you can imagine pumping up a bunch of stinky mud. Make sure that you're getting your, your neighbors to sign off that they're okay with the odor for sixty days or whatever. I don't know if it's going to smell, but...
Yeah, I, I did go over with, John says the odor is about four days, less than a week.
Okay.
And you won't smell it anymore, but you'll smell it when they're pumping it, when they're dumping it in that bag and it'll smell for a few days. They're planning on doing a lot of this during the week, you know, because they'll be up here, they'll be in, in town and they'll be doing it that way. They'll be working every day of the week. So, and I don't see a problem with either one of those requests. If you want to do it, bring your plan up, get it approved. The issue's going to be timing and I would like to see if we could set something up where, you know, I have to wait for a council meeting to do that. You know, we've had dock permits, we've done all, we've worked with the city a lot. If there's somebody who could say, okay, put your stamp on it, whether it's Tim Beach or somebody like that, just look at the plan, bless the plan, and let them go. I brought my plan, this is what I, you know, and I've shared this with all those interested homeowners. This is what, this is what I'm going to do, this is what my plan is. So I think it's only fair to be prepared. You got to go up and, you know, get your plan approved, your plan approved, you can move forward.
I think it's, I think it's a necessary thing. I was down there looking at a lot and it looked like a perfect area. I'm like, oh, this is lakefront. And then I walked, walked down on the dock and it was two feet deep and I know a lot of the area does get silt and stuff. So, I mean, I think it's great to be able to, to do that. The one thing I, I was going to also ask about the diver's safety, do they close off sections of the lake while they're cleaning or how do people...
Well, they're usually working in coves, so they, they'll take precautions. They'll have the diver flag and they'll, you know, they've got a boat there. So they've got somebody on their boat and they also have people in the water.
Okay, I just, yeah, I wonder about boat traffic and somebody getting run over down there.
Yeah.
So just...
But most of these, and, and like the property, you've probably looked at, you're backing the coves, so there's generally no traffic and a lot of them now are no wake. So it'll make it a little bit easier.
I have a question.
Yes?
Do the homeowners that are going to do this, are they signing contacts with the company, I guess, that's doing it?
Yeah, they'll, they'll, he sends them a quote and they'll sign the quote, send it back and then that'll be their...
And it says in there about like the removal, the disposal and all that, that they're in charge of all that?
Yeah, it, it spells it out in the quote is who's responsible for why.
Okay.
So, yes.
Does this, oh, sorry. As I say, does the company also have liability insurance so that the city doesn't incur any, any issues or anything?
I can get your confirmation of that.
Okay.
So, all good questions. Insurance certificate, yes. If we're going to, if the council, if they so desires, we can okay each individual property owner, but I think we're not going to be the police. So my suggestion would be with your contractor that the, where you put it in writing, they do not do anything until they have it signed off by the city. So I don't want the homeowners going up to the contractor and saying, hey, do mine, we're all good. I think it's got to be official, here's them signed off, and then the contractor can go.
Sure.
So, go ahead.
One other quick question. Can you guys provide us updates, like, you know, come in August and like, hey, you know, this is, this code, this code?
Yeah.
Or send an email, I guess, or something, you know, just to give some...
It'll be fine, but we kind of did that with the milfoil.
Yeah.
Where we got a map, this is what we've done so far and this and that. And, and he can give us the results, how much were they able to take out?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Oh, one more question. I'm sorry, I know that, isn't there some freshwater springs or something that feed the lake? Is there, I mean, is there anything that we would? I mean, I know that the, the lake, or who gave you permission already that the...
Well, Fish and Wildlife, right? And Division of Water.
Okay, so they would know if they're...
We're dealing with the lake, not the stream.
Okay. I don't know, I, I heard there were some natural springs somewhere, I just didn't know if that would affect...
Yeah, there are aquifers, there's, there's a ton of inlets into the lake. It's, so it's getting this water from a lot of, a lot of sources. But there are streams that you probably, here comes Tom, another...
I'll just add really quickly that this will actually improve the waters coming into the lake because we're getting all this silt and all this water runs out of there. And so therefore, you know, it's not dragging all that stuff further into the lake. So we'll be pumping all that out, so there will be deeper channels coming in. And so to your point, it'll actually improve the quality coming in, so.
Good.
And it's not going to mess with any of them because they're upstream, as Howard said, they're farther up the creek. So it's not going to affect us whatsoever, so.
Yeah, if there's no people there, they're not going to be dredging them on.
Good.
They're going to dredge where they use it.
Council, go ahead, man.
How many gallons is that?
What's that?
How many gallons is that?
That?
The bag?
That bag?
Yeah.
Um, it will hold, it's going to be about, what is it, five hundred cubic yards, cubic yards, so. And generally, that's going to be probably fifty percent to two thirds of water when it goes into that bag. So, and they, they have to, you know, and it'll be more than a one day process. They'll pump until they get that bag kind of full.
Yeah.
And then the water, there's a lot of water that's going to run out real quick. And then they got more room in the bag to fill it up more. So, you know, it's going to be, like, I'm, and I'm looking at the cost, I'm thinking mine's a three day project. So if he's into working three days, you got a, first day, you have to set up, you set up in the morning and you fill it up. And then you let it rest overnight, then you put more in it the next day. And, and I'm, I'm buying that size bag and, and once he's filled that thing up, he's got a micro, that's all he can do.
I was just curious if it, you know, if you had a, you know, small area where you could truck it out, you know, in a tank?
That, it would be an option. The issue with the trucking is, is just that it's fifty percent water.
Yeah.
It's real heavy, it's nasty, and, and you're going to have a dump truck sitting there and...
But it wouldn't be a dump truck, it would be a pump truck. The other lakes, I've seen them do this.
Like a self...
Yeah, the septic truck.
Something like that or something, yeah.
Yeah, I've seen them do it in other little lakes and stuff.
That'd be a whole lot of truckloads.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Consensus of the council is?
I'm, I'm fine with it. I think it needs to be done and we talked about it for long enough and I think we can do it forward.
Do we need a motion? No. The only thing I would ask, I would like a copy of all the okay's that you've gotten from everybody, just to cover the city's end along with the insurance. And then a document that states with your contractor that he will not perform this service unless he gets to sign off from the city first with the resident.
City approved plan?
Yeah.
Fair enough.
That makes sense. Maybe we can meet in my office sometime and go through it. Everybody okay with that?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Just one last clarification, so when you said sign off, are you talking about coming up and talking to yourself?
To me.
To you?
Yep.
Good. To Mark's party.
Yep.
We don't want to come up to every council meeting.
No, no, no.
Hey, no. Brian, we've got a call tomorrow night because of a meeting and we'll, I'll bring everybody up to speed on that. I'll get ahold of the proprietor, contractor, and make sure that we get some insurance documentation.
Okay. Great. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Discussion of pedestrian safety signage and crosswalk in downtown Williamstown. Counselor Smith has requested this. Jenna, before I, you get started, I did have a conversation with former mayor Rick today.
Okay.
And he told me that there is a crosswalk already approved by the highway department for where Mills Street is.
Okay.
That was never put in, but it's already been approved.
Perfect. Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. So I think we've talked about this before. It's been a while since we brought it up. But just that our downtown is, is becoming busy, which is great, especially evenings, more so weekends. I know there is signage at each end of town. I've tried to pay better attention. I know there's a twenty-five mile, mile an hour speed limit as you're entering here into Williamstown. There's one on the other end of town, I think right past the, my old Kentucky barn as you're coming into town. There is a caution light that flashes there at the post office at that crosswalk. I just don't know, I, I think there was discussion about trying to put a crosswalk in the middle, like between like Sasswood Class and the end of Old Grant County Deposit, but I don't know if there was, if my memory serves me correct, that you can't put them so close together or something. I know we have to go through the state for all of this. John, were you in on this conversation? He's looking at me like, Jamie.
No, I was in, but... There used to be one there at Lucas Strode's, Old Lucas Strode's and that.
You're right.
There was a crosswalk there because if you took your driving permit, you had to stop there.
That's right.
Yeah, if you didn't stop, you didn't pass your driver's license.
So, and I don't know if there can be any, I don't know what's out there and I apologize, I didn't research it before I came to talk about it, but, you know, what are our options for like flashing crosswalk stuff or stuff that's like, you know, where the crosswalk is on the street, that it's more pronounced or silly as it sounds, but just even, you know, police presence and people's, I mean, I live on Main Street and people fly by my house and you're almost two downtown. Like, if the police just pull, pull you over, hey, this time it's a warning, next time it's this, you know, people know this is police, we have to be more careful. I think we talked about a crosswalk there by Tony's Carver Shop because, you know, you've got steps down to public parking. So I don't know how we go about this with the state to getting approval or what extra measures can be taken. And then one other thing that wasn't, oh, signage, the thing about signage, and I know John's brought this up before, is just signage for more parking, you know, because there's municipal parking in behind like Miffy and then the parking in behind like Hansi to point people in the direction to, of more parking. And maybe putting that on the buildings if the owners would allow it. So anyways, that's what I have. If anybody wants to chime in.
Good idea. I, I've seen these crosswalks in California where you can actually, there's sensors when you get near the crosswalk, the pedestrian... Good idea, I, I've seen these crosswalks, uh, California where you can actually, there's sensors, when you get near the crosswalk, the pedestrian lights up the sensors, and it automatically makes, there's, um, reflectors that go all the way across the crosswalk, and they start blinking.
Yeah.
And it, it definitely gets your attention when you're driving, I guess it always, you know, it's, it's really practice with, with getting people used to something like that, because there's for years, there's not, hasn't been a crosswalk, but, um, I think it's, uh, yeah, patrol, having police out there also, and but there are some kinda nifty things that you can do to, to highlight a crosswalk, and it should be safe, it should be something that people aren't gonna get run over using if it's, you know? But I, I think it's definitely needed.
John, that was a good time to bring up.
Yeah, well, I was, I was letting Jason finish, so, there's obviously the one by the courthouse, I think the one by Tony's is nice, because you got the steps there. And then the one at Mill Street is a necessity, too, I also still believe we should make Mill Street one-way, just because of that. I think we need to work on our alleys also, so, because you've got the alley by the new flyer shop, it's kinda blocked off with people working in it, so if we got people parking around back, we're gonna force them to walk all the way around, so we need to get those alleys probably cleaned up, too, or at least, you know, I know they're working, so timelines or whatever, it's gonna be a must in the future to help with that parking around back. I know Derek and him's been working on the islands back there, they look a lot better, um, some of the vehicles are moved around town, behind town. Construction work material was fenced off back there, so it's a lot safer to park your vehicle back there. I'm assuming in the budget, we was talking about cameras, too, that's gonna help in our parking, hopefully, we can get some in our parking around back, people will feel safer about parking back there then. But I, yeah, I think it, there's, there's definitely a need for the crosswalks, 'cause you got people just darting out from behind a vehicle. But I don't know what we're gonna do to, I mean, we have got to figure out how to get to the public as far as, hey, these crosswalks are here, people are gonna use them, you know, to the pedestrian, it's what you're supposed to do, but we're not used to them, so it's gonna, the, um, red light by my barber shop also, so people turn right on red constantly. And I know you can turn right on red there, and that's fine, but you should stop before you make that corner, someone's gonna get hit there, too, because you've got the crosswalk. But no one stops, so they make that corner thirty mile an hour, thirty-five mile an hour, and usually yell at you for using the crosswalk. But that's gonna be a spot, too, in the future.
I wonder what the requirements would be to put up signage that says no, no turn on?
Turn on red there, yeah.
I think, is that all through the highway, District Six?
Right.
Is it, uh, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but is down by, um, where Skinner's Furniture used to be, is that city parking also? Is that parking lot city? I mean, we take care of the steps. 'Cause I, I mean, it's a, it's a parking lot there, it's used quite a bit, but I don't know if we could go in, look at maybe, look at the parking lot itself, maybe restripe it. I know you have the alley that comes all the way around there, but if we could work on that, we can maybe gain some spots for people on that end of town, also. I know they fixed the steps down too long ago.
The parking lot, beside and back of it?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's our, that's city, I believe.
So if we could look at the parking spots in there, we might be able to gain a few there by just restrypping it, I don't know.
And the parking lot where Hans wanted to put his chargers?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I think maybe that idea may be abandoned, but I'm not sure. Um, because I think they were looking to get some tack, something from the government that's not gonna be there anymore, but anyways. So we could, if we striped that lot and put a sign, you know, public parking this way, um. Well, I know, I can attest to, I mean, I still call it School Road, but I was coming from Skeeter Fest to coming home. I didn't pay attention to what the speed limit was, and I came down that hill, and I got pulled over, it's like, oh, okay, well, I live right here, I'm sorry, officer. And, I mean, he pulled car after car after car after car over, 'cause I could see the blue lights from my house, which was good, I'm glad he did. Don't you think that when I go down that hill now, like, ooh, I better slow down, because I got pulled over, so, I'm just thinking, too, just people getting pulled over, nobody wants to get pulled over in the middle of town.
I know another crosswalk area that I thought in the past, too, is where Stanley Funeral Home is, if you come off School Road, any, I, I don't know how many kids walk these days.
There are a lot of kids that
But walking across, and there are parking lots across the street, too, so having a crosswalk in that area so that you could cross, you know, I think would be
Maybe at the end of School Road, and then
It's either in the School Road, and then wanna cross School Road, or you, I mean, I, I don't know how else you would do it, but, you know, sidewalks on the one side, so you'd have to cross School Road, and then wanna cross Twenty-Five, is what I'm assuming.
There's a lot of kids that walk, I've seen.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of walking there, uh, there's a lot, you know, anytime there's a
So what, what is our, what's our action item here, what do we, what do we, what do we wanna do? What is it that we fill all of the parking spots?
Well, I just think people being more aware of the speed limit, so, um, I don't know if you can you know, put the, put flashing lights on the speed limit, like, reduce speed, I don't know what our options are, what it costs, what does the state pay for, what would we have to pay for?
Well, I got this today, just coincidentally enough, so I'm being told, uh, it's temporary, I get it, but we can put these up, and we probably can get them free through our, uh, A B C, um, license situation through the state, uh, if we put in things like, you know, don't drink and drive, or stuff like that, so I'm gonna look into that. I mean, at least we can put those here and there, um, so I'll take care of that. Crosswalks, now, what about the one, we have one approved by Mill Street, do we just wanna go see if we can flush that, put it in, right?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Do we wanna further the one-way?
I, I mean, I brought it up in the past, um, I've talked to numerous residents, I don't know that it's costing anybody that much time to make Mill Street one-way versus just making it safe for the public. I just, I know it's getting busier, and pulling out of there is just gonna be a problem, I mean the day we walked in on foot, Dave, you know, you step out, you step back, you step out, you step back, and it's like, you can't do that in the car.
Yeah.
And it seems like the cars are starting to ease farther out into Twenty-Five Two-C, and I, I just don't want anybody hit there. I mean, I know you're running speeds of probably thirty-five, and I think most vehicles will handle that, but still, I don't wanna take it on the bike.
Most people does fifty or sixty on that.
True.
There's police officers sit there, wasn't one in Williamstown, he sit there, and, he's, man, these people fly, he got his little thing out and everything, and when they come off of Twenty-Two, they come down that hill, and I mean, they're flying.
I also think about the boats on Mill Street, too, when you're heading to the lake, I know it's a shortcut, and that's fine, but when it's both ways, it's kinda narrow. I mean, we all try to avoid the dip, and you know where the dip is, so you kinda try to go around the dip, well, you're in, if you're hauling a boat, whatever, now you've got I, I mean, I think it's just narrow, I think it's just safer to make it one-way, but that's
I'm gonna, I'm gonna at least look into that, and we can talk about that, you know?
Could you make a four-way stop right there?
That's what I was thinking.
Four-stop signs and
That would slow people down in town.
Well, you get a four-way stop, enough flashing lights, enough crosswalks, nobody's gonna move.
No.
You'll move about fifty feet, stop again.
Kim ain't gonna be with the whole girl.
You know, the thing about it is, crosswalks are great, there's a crosswalk with a flashing light in front of the post office.
And nobody uses it.
Nobody stops.
Try to cross there, and you're gonna get run over.
I live there, and you can't get across there, even with the kids, nobody stops.
Nobody stops.
I could stand there and watch
You can put more crosswalks in, but you can't get the traffic to stop. That's the problem, I like the ideas.
Me, too.
But it's an example of what I just said, you have a flashing light there, but you better look before you cross, because if you get killed, you can't just sit up and say, well, it was that guy's fault for not stopping.
That's the same way, the one there at the red light, they don't stop.
Yeah.
So, and, when they've got the red light, you've got the crosswalk, well, they just make that corner and hit the gas, well.
Me, meanwhile, I will talk to Chief Collins and get, uh, some more, um, surveillance of presence there.
If you had speed limit signs, you know, you have already speed limit signs, but you see some of these speed limit signs, it's in towns where it's got flashing
Yes.
LED lights in a square around it, so you recognize that, that's probably more of a, a tension getter for the traveling public than anything.
Good idea.
I agree.
Those are, you know, so, uh, school zones, you know, you see a few lights there, you see people, even at Williamstown, where Dry Ridge at the school zone. People won't slow down even in school zones, you get a ticket for it, that will slow you down.
That's what I'm saying, if people get pulled over, like I did, coming down to the road, that's why I out-dogged us on School Road.
Signage with that, with those little LEDs, they, they do get your attention.
Um, we'll look into that, too, I'll talk to House, by the first meeting in July.
Just some options that we can look at, thank you.
You're welcome, good, good topic of conversation.
How would you put those sign, I mean, 'cause, with the parking, if you put the sign towards the sidewalk, you're, it's gonna be blocked from a car. I don't know how we're gonna do it without it being overhead almost.
On the speed limit?
Only like crosswalks or anything like that, just because, like I said, if you put them on, close to our sidewalks, the cars are parked there, you're not gonna see them, right?
Georgetown has got signs right in the middle of their
Middle of the road, yeah.
There, right, and, and people pays attention to it, too.
Don't they have speed bumps or something, or some sort of like?
Um, well, they let us put a speed bump on Twenty-Five.
But them signs right in the middle, you see that, you look up.
Yeah, you can paint the surface, too, on the ground, sometimes they'll paint, like, like pedestrian
Slow down. You know what I've noticed, too, I think, like, going downtown, Twenty-Five is a speed limit, I think it could be less, but there are other pots of, that could be higher than Twenty-Five, you know? So I think we gotta, uh, I'll ta, we'll take a look at that. Any other discussion on that, good topic? So, I, I've implemented, uh, on your last number seven, public forum, and I've been thinking about this for quite a while, I, um, I think it's something that we should do, uh, maybe it's once a month, I think it's the first meeting of the month, but, uh, I've added public forum, uh, I like to keep it I got a ninety-second limit, um, that's flexible, I just don't want someone up here, you know, preaching for twenty minutes, so I had to put some kind of limit on it, and, you know, per topic, but I like to hear from the folks who are in the audience, if there's something on your mind, you thought of, um, so I've added that. I would, those of you who would like to speak, uh, please, uh, state your name, uh, I'd like to know where you live, your address in town, and then we'll go from there. And it's open now?
Let me be the first.
Okay.
I need to say. Mark Moser, Forty-Five Highway Drive, all right, um, June fourteenth, which is Flag Day. Also, I know you're booked, Mayor, but, uh, it is also Lake Cleanup Day, where residents of the lake, we get out, and we have, uh, Brian Miles supplies us a dumpster, and we go around and clean the shoreline of the lake completely. And it's amazing the things that you'll find, even though you thought you found everything, that you could in a year's time, but, um, we do that every, uh, always the Saturday before Father's Day, so this year it's the fourteenth. Immediately following that is our Downtown Association Annual Meeting, extend you an invitation, if you'd like to come, we, uh, we provide lunch to all the volunteers who clean up the lake, and then we have our meeting right after that, after it is lunch, so, usually they're in a pretty good mood by that time.
After the eat, sure.
So, but, you're welcome, starts at noon, you can come up for lunch if you want, but I know you're busy shooting the piano, so, um, if you can make it, great.
Cleanup starts at noon?
Yeah. And it's, it's at the Marina, so, the dockside, so, you can see the progress.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, that was great. Anyone else like to speak, anything on your mind? Okay.
I have something to add, um, I didn't add to earlier, if you guys wanna carry, an update for the Marigold Day event. And, um, we met for our first meeting, put a committee together, uh, for the event, and we met our first meeting on May sixteenth, and discussed, uh, the event, and what we're gonna do, and include and everything on that event, um, the, the event committee, uh, is Jenna Austin Smith, Christopher Jump, April Lamb, Jamie Baker, Caitlin, uh, Bentley Thayer, and myself. Oh, and also April Favela here is gonna also join us, so we're, um, actually gonna do our second meeting this Friday, four P M. But, uh, the event, uh, just so you know, Marigold Day is, is gonna be a, a great event, we're, uh, we're gonna be doing that on Saturday, September twentieth. We're actually bringing back the parade, so that's exciting, um, parade will start at ten A M., and then go until, until noon, and then, uh, from noon to four-thirty, we'll have bands, um, Marty Brown has already been scheduled to play, and we also are looking to get Top This Band to play as well, so we have a couple of great bands, we'll have inflatables, we'll have games, crafts. The, uh, the parade's gonna be pretty fun, we're gonna do a, um, we wanted, this is what we wanna do, we're gonna get it voted on and bring it to you guys, but the hope is to do a People's Choice Award for the event float, where, um, registration will be five dollars to get into the parade, but the, the, uh, the People's Choice will be voted on by the community, uh, we're gonna set up a Q R code that you can vote on, and whoever wins that, the float, uh, parade, will get all the earnings of the five-dollar donations, if, if that's legal, maybe we need to talk to our legal counsel, but uh, that's something that we wanted to do, to encourage people to, to decorate, decorate with marigolds, we are gonna have a lot of marigolds this year, that's part of the the festival, is to definitely have marigolds, we'll have food trucks, we'll have, um, just a whole bunch of stuff that we have planned, and, and we're hoping to use the backside of the the amphitheater for the first time, if we can get a, a grant, um, we're looking to get a grant that could hopefully help us, um, put some grass back there, and to make it look a little nicer. Not saying that we're promising that, but that's kinda what we're hoping for at this point, but, all that to say is, we're excited, and it's gonna be a really fun event, so uh, if you'd like to help, we still are in need of volunteers, um, we're gonna need about, uh, thirty volunteers, um, we need sponsors, if people would like to sponsor the event, they can get their name promoted on all the flyer materials, and all the banners and different things, and, um, we are looking for, uh, I guess we already have about twenty-five, uh, food and vendor, um, different vendors, so we have them, if, uh, if you are interested in doing food or a vendor, like a craft vendor, please, uh, reach out to us, and we'll, um, get you registered for that as well. Anything of that missing, Jenna?
Nope, I think you covered it.
Okay, all right, well, that's, I'll have any questions?
Questions?
Go make a car show.
Car show, we do wanna have a car show part of the, the parade, we definitely wanna have, um, if you have some folks that you wanna
A lot of people wants a car show.
Yeah.
Do you like to be in charge of the car show?
Yeah, if you wanna be in charge.
Get one of my boys there.
Make sure you get with the state, uh, so you get the permit to close Twenty-Five that day.
Yeah, and I think we're just gonna close it for the parade, right?
We're hoping to, yeah, just to, if it works out to close it for the parade, and then do everything on the backside where the amphitheater is, if not, we'll just, if that doesn't work out, then we'll close down the road, we don't, we don't have
It's a matter of getting the state its authorization.
Okay.
So that's a state highway, just
Definitely.
How, what's the lead time on that, Kim?
Uh, you probably don't, go ahead and do that.
Do it now?
Yeah. Uh, let's see, John, let's see, it's lasting, I'll think of it here.
Great update, thank you.
Okay.
Derek knows the steps to go through.
He does, alright. All right, anything else, citing nothing, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
So made by John Coleman.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ronnie Manning, roll call?
John Coleman.
Yes.
Kim Prepper.
Yes.
April Favela.
Yes.
Ronnie Mains.
Yes.
Jason Bean.
Yes.
All right, thank you all for coming, great meeting.